Welcome, everyone. Welcome to the January 6th Plumb and Selectment meeting. Happy New Year to everyone. Welcome back after the holidays. So the agenda has been published. Any additional items that people would like to be considered along the way? So we generally start with a brief review of ground rules just to hopefully make things run smoothly. We do try to practice patient urgency, moving things along but in a certain style. Each of us, when we speak, try to be time-sensitive in getting to the punchline so others have a chance to speak. We do keep a parking lot for issues that come up that maybe we can't fully address tonight so they don't get lost along the way. We do recognize the seriousness of our work but try to bring along some joy and laughter as best we can. And we have lately tried to lower the volume of the conversation and bring as much civility as possible to these meetings. We aspire to all of that stuff. Sometimes we succeed pretty well, sometimes a little less well, but we certainly continue to aspire. And as has been our practice lately, we'll take a few moments of silence now to be used, maybe just to quiet down or in any way any of us like. Maybe a chance to just be grateful for the opportunity to be of service and maybe just a chance for each of us to remind ourselves why we do the work we do and to be grateful for the opportunity to serve the town. So again, welcome, everyone. Right off the top, I want to welcome Richard Goulard, who's doing our videography tonight. Richard is the Executive Director of the combined Carver-Halifax Studios that hopefully we will be a part of right after town meeting. We're thrilled to have him here and we are very appreciative of that studio offering to continue to film our meetings while we get to town meeting so that there's the chance for the public to see what goes on here. So we appreciate Richard and we really, really appreciate the Carver Studio, the Carver-Halifax Studio. I think maybe I should mention that that studio is in the form of a nonprofit organization that runs it. It is funded mostly by surcharges on Comcast bills, but it is a nonprofit entity and does accept donations, has had some donations recently. And for those that are moved to continue to promote transparency and promote good communication amongst the towns, that's a wonderful organization to consider philanthropic efforts toward. So onward. There are actually very few items on the agenda tonight. We'll see how it goes, you just never know. So the first item is to appoint a new Assistant Treasurer/Collector. Just to give a little bit of an overview on that, Kim LaRue, who is the present Assistant Collector/Treasurer, is resigning. And the present Collector/Treasurer went ahead upon hearing that and posted a position being available at the townhouse, at the website, in newspaper ads. Several applications were reviewed. There was one individual who really stood out, Christine Kelly. And that is the individual that we are being asked to appoint tonight. Christine is well-known to the Board of Selectmen because she was an applicant for the Executive Assistant position. And I think, speaking for myself and I think speaking correctly for the whole board, we were quite impressed with her along the way. Colleen, is there anything in the correspondence letter that should be added before we move on?
It's a letter from Colleen Moran, the Treasurer/Collector. And she just gives Christine qualifications. She's familiar with our CDC software, she's worked with it in the past. So she has municipal experience, she's got experience doing payroll, experience handling accounts available and receivable, and has human resources experience and good writing skills. Basically, Colleen feels she's the best applicant for the job.
So I'll make a motion that we appoint Christine Kelly as Assistant Treasurer/Collector.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. That one's done. Next item is the lay-in land donation. At our last meeting, the Board of Selectmen voted to provisionally accept the donation of land on Ring Road. That acceptance was provisional on Town Council assuring us of a clear deed. Some issues have come up there and I'll call on Linda Letty to maybe fill us in on that.
Well, I remember this was a donation that we're delighted to potentially have or receive. But the offer came in, I think it was around December 16th or 17th, it came in very late in the year. So we scrambled very quickly with our town lawyer, with the donor's lawyers, to get an appraisal done, to do a survey, you know, all the stuff that you'd normally do for closing, we tried to do in 10 days so that we could capture the December 31st date for the donor. And we almost made it. We made it to about December 30th. And unlike, you know, other circumstances we've had, there's not a lien or anything on the title, but this relates to the dam on Ring Road.
The Dam-Dam.
The Dam-Dam. And Mr. O'Neill is the owner of that property as well as the parcel across the street, that's the large marsh that we've all been walking through and enjoying. And there's non-compliance orders, what the state calls it, against anything that Roger O'Neill owns right now until the dam gets fixed. And that's very close to being done. We've been in contact with the engineers and with the Assistant Attorney General as recently as December 31st. And the wheels are turning very, very well, they're all meshing, but we couldn't hit it by last 5:00 last Wednesday night. We just couldn't because we started pretty late in the year. So things are looking very likely, very optimistic, that this will be closed in the first quarter of the year. So our Town Council recommends that both the Selectmen and the Conservation Commission, you know, you can affirm your interest and just also confirm that you are suspending the final action on the acceptance until Parcel A, as it's called, the marsh, is separated out and the towns assure that, you know, we have no other obligations except to receive it as a gift. And so that's, you know, basically you're just letting things get, you know, just sorted out the next, my guess is going to take two months, maybe faster, I don't know, two or three months, might be faster, I don't know. But there's good willingness and support on all sides, you know, I'm very optimistic. But we ran out of time.
We do actually have to have the dam fixed.
Not we.
No.
The order is against the dam, which is privately owned, and it has to meet the requirements of the dam safety Division of DCR, Division of Conservation and Recreation in the state. And Mr. O'Neill has hired a team of an engineer and a construction company, and they have been working with us a little bit, but mostly they've been working to make sure that they know and understand what DCR is going to require. And that's very important. They know what the CONCOM is going to require and what DEP is going to require. So they have all the information ahead of them. They know it, they've just had a program and got some software lined up to actually look at stream flows and stuff, and that's what everyone's waiting on. And that's been done, apparently. And so it's going to start coming back through the process again.
I guess in your stream of emails it looked like there was some hope that the state would waive it on that piece of property, but it sounds like...
Well, no, we didn't even think they'd waive it, but we weren't sure that the non-compliance order even affected Parcel A because it's across the street, it's only a marsh, the dam is on Parcel B, and then there's some other property in Plymouth. And we knew those were entailed, we had read separate documents that entailed those very specifically. But lawyers are really good at finding everything. And when they dug December 29th and 30th, they came up with Parcel A was mentioned too somewhere, and that was that. So it was literally 3:00 in the afternoon on December 30th. And so we tried, we talked to the AG's office Wednesday morning, he's doing, you know, no one was around, it was New Year's Eve morning, what's going to happen? So it's starting up again this week, and it will go through the wheels in the next month or two, you know. So we're optimistic, everyone's optimistic. So you can take a vote, sort of just saying, you know, you still conditionally accept it, you're just waiting for the process to be finished, basically.
So you think we need another vote?
Well, the Town Council said you could acknowledge at least the situation, I don't know if you need a vote, but acknowledge that, you know, we have not, the town has not notarized the acceptance that you did or that CONCOM did, we purposely didn't notarize those to make them final because we wanted to have the paperwork in. So however you choose to do it, but they recommend you simply acknowledge that you didn't close the final circuit on that acceptance last week or two weeks ago, whatever it was.
So I make a motion that we acknowledge that there has been a delay on accepting this land donation while the title issues get cleared.
It's not title, it's not a title issue, it's an issue with the compliance order of the deed. It's not a title issue, thank goodness.
Deed issue gets cleared.
Deed issue, yep. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I have a question, Roger called me. And he's very excited and not upset, I mean, he'd sold some violin bows or something that I guess he had big gains on.
Oh, good.
So he was looking forward to the tax write-off. But the reason he called is he said to make sure in our title search that we have the lawyer look for the right-of-way that he thinks he has across Andrews Land. He thinks he has a deeded right-of-way to those, to his bogs across Andrews Land. And he said that the woman doing the title search should, whoever it's, I guess it's the Town Councilwoman, Town Council's husband.
Yeah, one of the Town Council.
And just see if they came across that right-of-way.
All right. Well, we have more time now. I mean, it was a very, very busy 12, 13 days between the 17th and the 31st, and we got everything done except this thing. So I'll pass this on to the experts and they can...
Yeah, if it's theirs, there, if it's not, it's...
But he seemed, he was very pleased, I think, with the appraisal and the process. And we are using Mark Robinson of the Cape Cod Compact, who's one of the best negotiators or experts on making land deals happy for conservation in the Northeast. And so we pay him a small fee yearly and he helps the people in the town.
Well, Roger, the other thing he had is ways that the town could make income off this property. He thinks we should restore the bogs, bring those back. And I said Linda probably is going to do that.
Yeah, right. Don't even go there. If you read the Wetlands Act, 40 years is a long time, five years is a mess.
I know. But, and then he says, log it off.
Yeah.
So the timber, so...
We'll ponder all that when and if we finally own it, but there are certain serious constraints for wetlands that's been out of production over five years, so. But we appreciate the gift and it's, as you know, it comes off Ring Road, very close to the school. It's been very popular with everyone because we can get in that way and with the school. And the school has programs that they're talking about this year and in the future that they want to be able to get the kids in that way. So it's a beautiful piece of land, I love the marsh over there anyhow, straight. So it's very nice and it works out for the donor and for the town in a happy way. And just ran out of time, if we could have made 2015 come April 1st, we might have been better.
Now, one unrelated question. I got a call from Mike Mattern.
Oh, yeah?
And they were all served with registered letters, all the butters and neighbors and stuff. And I saw on your agenda, I think, that I guess you received the same notice or something?
On the butter, but there's a hearing, you mean, is that what you're talking about?
No, no, I, yeah, so you've scheduled a hearing, is that what you're...
CONCOM has a hearing.
We're like scheduling a hearing for the end of January, the 28th.
28.
So you've got to go through all the advertising?
Yes.
Okay. Mattern just wanted to make sure that they're not left out of the...
Oh, gosh, no, no, no.
No, no, they don't have, it's a, the whole process...
Starts over again, basically. Okay, thank you.
That's the 28th?
Yes.
Wednesday?
No, the Tuesday.
27.
Did you get the letter, Mark?
I did, I just, I did.
This, it was sent out by the applicant?
Yeah. Okay.
It might be the 27th or the 28th. Okay, we'll determine that tomorrow. Oh, I can't go.
Okay, whatever.
We'll find out tomorrow, we'll let you know.
Yeah, but you're going through the regular...
Yes, exactly. I don't know.
Electronic communication, anything there?
Status is the same.
Okay.
Nothing's really changed.
Solar ongoing projects, anything new, Mr. O'Neill?
No change, it's kind of, the one on Lake Street is kind of on hold here until we get the lawsuit resolved, but I was hoping it would be all done, I thought it would be quick, but I guess not.
Okay. Dale?
Yes? Oh, you want mine? A couple of bits here. First thing I have is the results of the traffic study on West Street. And I mean, a bit copies for everybody. The bottom line is, in the two days' period of testing, 95% of the vehicles were traveling at 33 miles an hour or less, and the traffic count was 450 cars per day. And if you have any more questions for Jim, he's also going to provide you with a letter to go along with that, which dropped us off today.
Is that a lot of, it doesn't seem like...
Pardon me?
Is that, in the scheme of things?
450?
Yeah.
Well, it is a lot considering the number of people who live on the road, but it is actually a cut-through road. People take that to cut-through, there are not 450 houses on West Street. And he's, you know, he's fairly, you know, fairly comfortable with the fact that there really wasn't, at least during this thing, there wasn't a lot of speeding on that road. In addition, the chief had directed patrols down there and he didn't find any problems in the couple of days he had done it as well. It was like, I think, one car in there that went over 45 miles an hour in two days of testing or monitoring. And the other thing that I have is, this is from Charlie Selig over in Halifax, Town Administrator. He wants to know if we are interested in applying perhaps for funding through District of Local Technology Technical Assistance Program for two projects. The first would be marketing, he says most of our small businesses are not associated with any of the local business associations, Plymouth Rock and the Cranberries. Can Halifax provide resources and information to help local businesses market themselves? And could that assistance be extended beyond a particular area to cover additional areas? And that would be us. And the second is internet access. They're, apparently in Halifax, they're about as happy with Comcast as the people in Plimpton, so they're looking at perhaps another way treating internet cable access as a utility, in other words, similar to infrastructure, similar to roads and utilities and so on and so forth. And I just had a brief conversation with them before the holiday, but if the Board's interested in me pursuing that with now my, I certainly will. We're looking for grant money, in other words, to do it, it's not anybody's spending anything.
Yeah, there's actually something in the correspondence about that from the granting agency. I did wonder if we were interested and if anybody could think of anything that we would apply for.
Is there any reason we shouldn't be interested in at least pursuing?
I mean, at this point, no, I would think you'd want to pursue all the avenues and I think it's, you know, it's a real help for, I mean, that would be a real help for local businesses. And, you know, internet access is what it is. I mean, it's become such a pervasive part of contemporary living that, you know, it's almost as valuable as electricity these days, if there are any options to... Besides, we have at this point, CapeNet ran their cable optics through Halifax and Plimpton, it's actually hooked up in this building, but it's not active. So that may be some way to contact them and that would put everybody on a fiber optics backbone. They've looked into it, it's relatively, at this point, it's relatively expensive, they're just getting off the ground, but for municipalities, they may, especially for two municipalities, they may be interested in doing something.
Seems reasonable to me to pursue it, at least see if there's something that might be beneficial. Everyone all right with that?
Yes.
Headlines everywhere, okay. And that's basically it for me.
So back to the traffic study. So this came to Jim Mulcahy, so he has it. Did the police chief get it?
I believe he did. I have a copy here, I'll pass on to the...
If you could, because he actually sent along a really thoughtful level, letter about the issue of whether the speed limit should be changed and the issue of whether stop signs should be there. So I'd love for him to look at this and then get another opinion from you.
Okay, I'll make sure that he gets a copy if he doesn't have one.
Okay. Okay. That brings us, yes, to correspondence. Linda?
Yeah. Could I bring something up that's not on your agenda?
I think you can, we probably can't take much action on anything, we can certainly have some...
No, but more like background information.
We'd love it.
If you would allow me to do that.
Please.
Because I got a call from Tom Millias, the Building Inspector, on Saturday. And so I thought I'd assemble some information to provide background to people, that, you know, as people talk, it's just better to have us all in the room, and it seems like the right room for me to be presenting it to. Tom called because he had heard there might be some concerns about what's going on with the boardwalk, you know, is it, this is the boardwalk between the two parks that's getting put up, do we have a permit and all this other stuff? So I'm here to put some things on the record so people know what's going on. And if you give me five minutes, I'll summarize it.
Take your time. I will mention along the way that Linda, who's done so much work on so many levels and so many committees, will be disappearing for a couple of months.
No, no, not for very long.
A couple of months?
No, no, I'll be around, I'll be around.
All right, take it back.
Yeah. I'm here. But it doesn't mean that I have to come to every meeting, you see, I cut myself some slack. But this all started, you know, the parks were voted in in 2012 in the town meeting, and that was a big town meeting, biggest in history, so it was fun to note. And we had a lot of support. And so we had to go through, the reason I'm sensitive about the word "title" is that five months after that town meeting, we found out that the property we were buying on Main Street had a title issue on page 77 of the Title Search, and the lawyer found it, and that was good, and it took us a year to untangle that with the IRS. So that's why I'm so sensitive about the word "title" and "liens," because that took a lot of time. But when we finally untangled that, we had to extend, go to the Selectmen to extend the purchase and sale agreement. That happened in February 13th, February, you know, 2013. And so that was a big meeting, that we went over everything, you know, could we pull off this project and what was it going to consist of, and all, everything, from soup to nuts. And one of those elements was that you guys were asking what was the role of the building permit. And Tom Millias, who's the Building Inspector, came up here and had done his work and his research, and he said we will not need a building permit. And that was during the Selectmen's meeting in February of 2013. So we've been proceeding on that assumption all this time as we went through all this other stuff and got other things ready. But in late October, Tom sent us an email and said, "No, I think you need a building permit." So that made us go, oh, well, we better look into that and figure out what that means. So we've been doing more research in the last six weeks or so to learn about that. And we did meet with Tom and Bob Carling, the zoning enforcement officer, two weeks ago tonight, as a better fact. So I just wanted to sort of cover some of the things we've learned along the way because I thought it might be useful since, you know, instead of playing telephone like you do at parties when you're a little kid, I thought we could all just hear at the same time. So both a year and a half ago, and then refreshing that in the last six weeks, we've researched and contacted and talked with dozens and dozens of people who are boardwalk and trail experts in the state. I should note that there are 500, approximately 500, boardwalks in the state of Massachusetts, some say 600. And many of them are exactly like the boardwalk we're putting in out between Cato's and Churchill Park. So we're not building something that's unusual. And so the kind of people I've talked to are people who are active trail and boardwalk builders through the Mass Trails Conference, which has 300 people go to it, the leading outdoor organizations that build these things, the town trail committees, the chairman and director of the State Trails Program, lawyers who specialize in land planning, zoning, and building, conservation agents, land planners, town managers, and building inspectors. It's a good thing you don't pay fees for phone calls anymore. We've talked to a lot of people. And not one of them could name an instance where a town has required a building or zoning permit for the kind of boardwalk we are putting in. I should note that one of the reasons Tom reversed himself in October was because we've had a fundraising effort going on to raise money for the parks and the boardwalk. And we have this wonderful sign out in front of the library, and I, hopefully you've been paying attention, you know that the name of the campaign is Ridge to the Rich. And I think it never dawned on any of us that a building inspector would look at that marketing campaign in a very different way than we did. And Tom saw the word "bridge" and started getting really worried because a bridge would require a building permit. And it never dawned on me or any of us to go say, "Tom, it's not really a bridge, but it's a really good slogan." So it's the same old low elevation, flat boardwalk that we always knew we were going to be doing, and there are dozens like them in the state. You can walk them at Mass Autobahn Sanctuaries, at Newbury Port, up here in Pembroke, at Wildland Sanctuary, they're all over the place. And once Tom looked again at the engineered drawings, which, just so you know, they've been engineered by two different engineers and stamped, they're very safe, that's not the issue. But once he looked at those again, and we went over that we hadn't changed our plans, we just wanted to raise some money, he said, "Absolutely, you don't qualify for a permit, you're like everyone else, and you don't get permits for this kind of stuff." And that was backed up, apparently, by the regional inspector that he, you know, that he talked to. So that was the kerfuffle that we hit, you know, in the last couple of weeks because we didn't know. And if we had talked to Tom earlier, that would have been good. But one of the things I learned along the way about the zoning aspects of it, because we did talk to a lot of lawyers who, thank you very much, gave us free advice, as well as a lot of people who build these things, is that in zoning, what you start looking at is the intent and the purpose of what you're doing. That's what you start with as your wedge. And the intent and purpose of the Plimpton Bylaws, the overall purpose, I'm not going to read it all, but it says, "Include many public values, including open space, public requirements, conservation of resources, and encouraging the most appropriate use." And then within that, there's a floodplain section. And the purpose of the floodplain section and the district for floodplains is protection from flooding, conserve the value of the land and buildings, protect and preserve the bogs and marshes and ponds and the wetlands, encourage the most appropriate use, and preserve and increase the amenities of the town. And I think it's worth noting that our bylaw, I looked it up, went back and read all the minutes, our bylaw was adopted, it seems like, in 1989. And there must have been a template out from the state in the 80s because I've read now dozens of other towns' bylaws, and they're all, they all say the same thing. Some have more flowery introductions, some have, you know, expanded, but the templates, the words are very, I mean, you know, almost all of them are very, very similar. So we are, we're a little plain Jane, I have to admit, but we're... But we're not, we're not weird. You know, we, you know, this is what other places do when they build boardwalks. So, so again, from all these advisors, what I home down, going through my notes, is what are the questions they say you always have to ask? And the questions you have to ask are, is the project allowed in the district where it's located? The answer for here is, yes, it is. Does it qualify in any other way to be in that district? And the answer to that is, yes, it is, because it's a municipal project, which are allowed in all districts. The next question is, is a zoning determination required as a result of a building permit? And the answer is, no, because the building department has determined that this structure does not require a permit. And I said, but it's safe, so don't worry. Does it impede the functioning of the floodplain? No, it does not. We have no filling or replacing of soils or anything like that. And has it met other relevant regulatory requirements? The yeses, the Conservation Commission and the DEP signed off on the boardwalk plan and the wetlands impact last April. And the DEP is much more rigorous, to be honest, than the floodplain requirements that are in our bylaw and most others. DEP has a lot of specifics, and that was signed off a long time ago in April. So, and the other big sort of picture is, there are legal precedent for installing boardwalks and floodplains. And there's something in Massachusetts now, I'm a layman, I'm not a lawyer, but I've been reading some of the, the backup documents that come that, that, you know, educate you about zoning things. There's something called the Massachusetts Purpose Test, goes back to nineteen seventy-two, and it directly supports the installation of a boardwalk. And in that case, Massachusetts court upheld the floodplain zoning decision by the town of Dedham that is now widely cited throughout the United States, that we're, we're on the map. And in that decision, the decision was that no structures could be erected in the floodplain except for a very narrow range of structures or relationships between wetlands, agricultural, recreational uses of the land and the water that do not require filling, such as a boardwalk. The U.S. Supreme, that, they, the, that went to the Supreme Court in the United States. The U.S. Supreme Court ruling on that appeal supported that finding of the lower court, that the reasons for the creation of the bylaw were clear, and they included conserving natural conditions, wildlife, open spaces for the education, recreation, and general welfare of the public. And they absolutely supported that, you know, the enforcement of the bylaw with that interpretation. So, so we've done a lot of learning in the last six weeks, just because we, we had done a lot to get through the DEP process last April, February, March, and April, because I said, that's quite detailed and rigorous. But then, when, when we used the wrong word in our fundraising campaign, but I can't say I'm sorry that we used it, because I, hopefully, if we had named it the most boring campaign in the town, we still would, but we've raised over forty-five thousand dollars from over three hundred people. So, we have money to do good things in the parks, and they cost money. And it's going to be a nice park, and it's going to have good solid stuff in it that you can sit on and walk across, and kiosks, and things to enjoy. And thank you to everyone who has given so generously, because it's been hundreds of people all giving, you know, most people are giving fifty or a hundred dollars for a couple of planks, and some people are buying benches and stuff. But it's all been small contributions that people have given. So, we're at the last stage in where we started in twenty twelve with the park vote, with the biggest town meeting in history, and it was just about unanimous among three hundred and eighty people. And there's a lot of excitement. I guess I haven't been out there, I wish I had been, but I wouldn't have been much use, but we've had forty to fifty people out there building in the last two weeks since we got the okay from Tom. And if you saw the paper last week, there's some fun stuff going in, and there's more to do. But it's been a huge, huge surge of energy from the town, and people are really excited and very pleased. And in, you know, in twenty twelve, we had one of the two towns in the state with only one percent of our land protected and open to the public. Now with Churchill Park and Cato's, I think we're at one point eight, so we're getting there. But it's a beautiful hundred acres, you know, it's a hundred acres that people can enjoy. And it's near the school and has lots of other things. So, we've educated ourselves in the last six weeks and learned more. And if anyone is asking questions, you know, we've tried to cover all the bases, we've tried to be very careful throughout. We were careful about other things up to now, and we're trying to be careful now, and we think we're on target. And off we go, hopefully if the weather holds. I'm not the builder. More help, you want more help out there, Ricky? It's fifty left. It's fifty out this weekend.
Many who faces this week, it was great. It's so great to be a part of that.
Yeah.
And have, uh-
Very exciting people coming to do that.
Great appreciation to everyone that's been involved, town committees and boards that put in huge amount of work. This has been three years in the making. The people that have made contributions, that have gone over the target. Couple Saturdays ago in the rain, I think there were thirty people up there building. Last Sunday in the cold, fifty people. This is a beautiful town project, and a beautiful sense of town, and a beautiful sense of place. And we're absolutely blessed to have this. It's going to be something that fifty years from now, a hundred years from now, hopefully people will look back and be thankful that we had the foresight to do this. Okay. I think, thank you, Linda. We go into correspondence.
Okay, the first thing is from the Old Colony Planning Council, which is the, the grant program that Dale mentioned earlier, which we will pursue with Halifax. That's a letter from Colin Moore about the acquaintance. Which we can actually vote on, can't we? I'm sorry, I was asleep there.
I thought I heard snoring.
Yeah, yeah. I do do that. All right. This is from the Chief Police for a special police appointment request for Robert Aiken, John Marinelli, and John Simon to be special police. We've had a couple of people resign, and we must fill those positions.
So, do we, do we need to-
I mean, will we appoint Robert Aiken, James Marinelli, and John Simon as special police officers?
Second.
All those in favor?
Okay. All right, this is another one, to appoint Justin Burns as a part-time patrolman. He's qualified, and he's recommended by the police chief. So, I move that we agree to appoint Justin Burns as a part-time patrolman.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This is from South Shore Race Management about the Strawberry Shortcake Road race, saying that it will be held on Saturday, May sixteenth. As in the past, it will begin and end at the Upland Club. No changes from past years, and they are hiring the police detail and placing them according to the recommendation of the police department. Do we need to vote to give them permission? What's the standing?
I don't know if they do the form or something, and we always allow it.
Yeah, we need to follow the town application form. And then you can prove it.
From the Old Colony Joint Transportation Committee, their agenda for the January eighth meeting and the minutes from the last meeting. Two copies of the Halifax, Plimpton Halifax Express. The Alcohol Beverages Control Commission is requesting a, an estimate of the population of Plimpton, which has been made at two thousand eight hundred and fifty people, and we need to sign that. Duckmail from National Grid. Letters from Copman Page. This is basically about the O'Neil property. You've already heard this. This is from Silver Lake Regional School District. The school committee is inviting the board of selectmen to the January school committee meeting on Thursday, January eighth, at seven P.M. at the high school. The agenda will be a discussion of the Building, Grounds, and Safety Subcommittee, considering the use of a portion of the district's excess and deficiency fund balance to address a number of identified long-term capital needs. Isn't that something that we were questioning?
It's, what it was tied into is the money that we just got from Pembroke.
Yeah.
And now they're trying to spend it.
And Halifax has, has already-
Been opposed to it.
Been opposed to it, and we need to, I know we're going to do something out of our town meeting again, maybe trying to reset our-
Yeah, we had established that special fund. I'll go to this meeting Thursday night, I'll get that information.
For Copman and Page about the Saker case, the new project on Ring Road. This is from Copman and Page regarding the water case. Other for the Halifax Express. This is, for you, it is the, it's a flash drive with a copy of the Selectmen's handbook, Massachusetts Association Selectmen's Handbook. I assume you've got yours?
I got mine.
And I got mine.
We've been waiting a couple of years for this, I've read a few of the chapters. It is stunningly good. Massachusetts Municipal Association, or the Massachusetts Selectmen Association of the MMA put this together. It's two hundred and fifty pages long. It is beautiful in terms of laying out lots of information on how to be a selectman, how to run buildings effectively. I ran my little flash thing through the washer and the dryer, and it still retained some of the next two pages, if you were wondering.
It didn't censor anything?
Pardon? Nothing, it had the whole thing on there. So, actually, we've been waiting for this because I, there's a lot of information in that that can become the template for creating a manual of procedures and policies in town. Hopefully, over the next few months, we can begin to work with that. Okay.
That was it for correspondence?
So, we are up to minutes. Any final words before we get to the minutes portion?
Just, I have a question for Dale. Dale, we haven't received that stuff from Melinda, right?
No. I, I sent her an email, and I haven't heard back from her, so she may have been out over the holidays, I don't know, but-
So, DOR?
Yes, DOR.
Let's time it, ask about that as well.
Because there's things that are in it that we've got to address fairly.
Well, that's why I asked her in the email, I said, you know, there are things that are budget-specific, either in terms of, of process or in funds we need, then I'd like to get that as early as possible to get it into this budget cycle. And again, I haven't heard back, and I don't want to rattle a cage at DOR quite too vigorously, so I'll send her another-
You're not going to call her boss or anything?
No.
I think we'll probably have some work ahead of us when that report comes up, both in reading it and acting on it. So, we have two sets of minutes to approve. The first are the minutes of December eighth. Does anyone have a chance to look at these?
Yes.
Yes.
I, do you have any corrections?
Yes.
Yes?
I did have a couple.
No.
Sorry. Okay, on the second page, it says that Larry Richmond was present, he's part of a group of twenty senior citizens, but they're not actually senior citizens, they're just a group of residents. He wrote a position statement, and he's asking, basically, I just sort of rewrote that paragraph. I just want to take a look at it. Or do you want me to just read, let me read aloud, and I should be right? Larry Richmond, representing a group of approximately twenty residents, stated that they have appealed the decision to the zoning board of appeals. They have hired an attorney and have also consulted with the Attorney General's office. Mr. Richmond read aloud their position statement. Tonight, the group is asking Mr. Millius for a cease and desist order to live with the Post Street Retreat to their current four clients pending the ZBA case. Mr. Richmond also made this request in writing, which is handed to Mr. Millius at tonight's meeting. And then later, it says, a member of the zoning board, which was Dave Alfordi, and I just thought we could put his name in, and that happened again. Further on, and then page three. About correspondence, Mr. Henry recommended, oh, this is about Silver Lake money. You suggested that the, it says that the board of selectmen should look into rescinding the payment. I think it should be changed to, he suggested the board of selectmen look into rescinding the twenty fourteen town meeting vote that allowed, just organizing, getting the right words in. So, that was it.
Okay, with all those changes.
Yep.
Okay. So, I make a motion to accept the minutes as amended?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Will you get those changes to Kristen?
Yep.
And then the next, last minutes of the meeting for approval are December twenty-second. You have a chance to look at these?
Yes.
I have one, you have?
Probably so.
That's exactly what I had. I would say rather than subject to stipulations, subject to, or conditional approval-
Yep.
Subject to town council, so I'll, I'll get that. You had something on the other page?
No, that was very minor. It was just, they've been issued town email addresses, not emails.
Okay. So, I will fix those and get them to Kristen. So, I make a motion to accept those minutes as amended.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
One intention. Because I was not there.
So, this was the stipulations. You can't comment on stipulations, do you? The motion actually said that it's subject to us.
Yes.
So, any words in the New Year, Mr. Henry, for the gathering?
No, keep up the good work, I guess.
Seek peace.
What's that?
Seek peace.
Worldwide?
I don't know, but it starts here.
Can't do better than that. Happy New Year to everyone. Thank you, everyone, for coming. Oh, next meetings, next Monday, the Monday after that is a holiday. So, essentially, the next meetings will be the twelfth and the twenty-sixth. And we'll probably continue mostly weekly after that, depending on what comes up.
Are you, are you still considering, you're not going to do that two o'clock thing, are you? Meeting at two o'clock, I mean?
We haven't discussed it lately. There was the consideration of having some meetings, some working meetings during the day.
Who's going to come? Everybody works.
Well, actually, there are plenty of older people in town that don't drive at night.
Like I said, my shadow.
I, I think there are people that would come at either time, should we decide to do that.
I have a feeling that we may need to explore that when the DOR report comes out, because we're going to have a lot of work to do. We certainly, if we had a daytime meeting, it would be essentially a working meeting, to get the work done, to get the details done, to noodle, even brainstorm some things. If we did a daytime meeting, it would have nothing to do with hiding from the public in any way. We certainly would continue to invite and have, hopefully, print coverage and the video recordings. But I think for the, at least for this month, we know the schedule will be like this. Okay?
Have we, Dale, maybe you've got, have we received anything from the FinCom on their calendar?
No, nothing at all. And we usually do by now, but sometimes it's, you know, early January.
So, that, that kind of will dictate a lot of the schedules and stuff?
I, I don't quite remember the details, but they have changed very considerably their schedule as far as meeting with boards and committees, and compressed it into a much shorter period, period of time later in the year, so it's a little bit easier to forecast and predict. So, I think that whole process will get compressed a little bit.
Well, the, the point there is, is in the conversation I had with Melinda, she's going to come down on us in support, we have to be involved in that whole project.
And I very much hope, I, I, that that can be the case.
But it's going to be very time consuming.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. See you next week. See you next week.